If you were running the meeting, we'd be done.
Something.
Check to make sure it's not plugged, it's plugged in right? That's slow.
Yeah. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown. Before we proceed with this evening's agenda, we ask that you please rise and join us in pledging allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Chair recognizes Planner Matthew Colado for reading of the items recommended for adjournment this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Board. The Planning Department would like to recommend the following items for adjournment because the applicants are not ready to be heard at this time. Under zoning petitions, number one, 2012-04 Storybook Homes in Nissconset. Number two, 2012-02 Carlson Associates, Kings Park. Number three, 2015-05 Thomas Geswali, Kings Park. Number four, 2010-06 KVC Holdings. Under waiver requests, five, number 773 Scholar Estates Comac. Six, number 1135 Toomey Platt, St. James. Seven, number 911A Glen Hole Northern, St. James. Under final subdivision, eight, number 1156 Map of Open Meadow, Fort Solongo. And under amendment of conditional approval, nine, a 288 application, second map of San Remo.
Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on any of the items recommended for adjournment? There being none, is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn items one through nine as read.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item number 10, Flynn Platt, Kings Park.
The applicant requests a retroactive extension of a performance bond to expire on May 7, 2018 in order to obtain more time to complete construction and necessary improvements. The applicant received conditional final approval for this two-lot subdivision from the Planning Board on May 7, 2008. A performance bond estimate in the amount of $89,405 was approved by the Board and subsequently signed by the chairman. The applicant submitted the bond monies and all related materials to the town, and the town board accepted the performance bond on July 15, 2008. Planning Board approval for this performance bond expired on May 7, 2016. The applicant submitted a performance bond extension application on August 27, 2016 to the Planning Department, and the application was distributed to all departments concerned for review. The Engineering Department has no objection to the bond extension. The Highway and Traffic Safety Departments have no comment. The Planning Department has no objection to the bond extension. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves a retroactive extension of the performance bond for the subdivision known as number 1101 Map of Flynn Platt for a two-year period from May 7, 2016 to expire on May 7, 2018.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Vincent Trumarko. I represent the applicant. As far as the extension, as you just heard, it was a, there's a recommendation of approval from the various departments, so we asked the Board for that retroactive extension.
Okay. Any questions? Any members of the public wish to be heard on the extension? There being no comment, is there a motion?
In the matter of number 1101 Map of Flynn Platt, I move that we adopt a resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion's carried.
There's another section.
Yes.
This is the same subdivision, number 1101 Map of Flynn Platt, a waiver request. The applicant is requesting to waive conditions P and Q and conditions F and G on Lot 1 of the final conditional approval for number 1101 Map of Flynn Platt. The applicant submitted a waiver request to this department, August 15, 2016, and the application was distributed to the Town Engineering, Traffic Safety, and Highway Departments for review. The application was also referred to the Suffolk County Planning Commission and the Long Island State Park Commission because the property is located within 500 feet of Nissiquaw River State Park. Conditions F, G, P, and Q read F. Prior to the time of submission of an application for a building permit for a particular lot, the subdivider shall have his engineer or surveyor submit an individual site plan of that lot which is in substantial agreement with the intent of the approved regrading plan. Such individual site plan shall show certified existing topography and all relevant grades proposed for the street, house, and all land to be regraded on that lot. The site plan shall show all storm pools, dry wells, retaining walls, et cetera, as bonded or as deemed additional necessary. Such site plan must be approved by the Engineering Department and returned to the Building Inspector prior to issuance of a permit for the foundation and garage slab only. Condition G, at such time as the subdivider has completed the foundation and rough grading for a particular lot, he shall have his engineer or surveyor make an as-built survey of the foundation grade, garage slab, and the grades immediately around the foundation. Such as-built foundation plan must be approved by the Engineering Department, and no framing shall commence before this approval. Condition P, a three-to-six-foot fence shall be installed along the easterly and westerly boundary lines of Lot Number 2, 153 feet and 78 feet respectively, so as to minimize potential damage and encroachment of any kind to the state and town properties by adjoining property owners. The map to be filed shall note the same. I just want to make a note on condition P. The intent was the easterly and north boundary line, as you can see on the site plan. Condition Q, the two rows of native and non-invasive plants and trees as determined by the Town, Department of Environment and Waterways Urban Forester shall be planted on the inside perimeter of the fence described in condition P above. The Engineering Department has reviewed the application as no objection to waiving the conditions mentioned above. The Highway and Traffic Safety Departments have no comment. Pursuant to General Municipal Law, Section 239N Suffolk County Administrative Code, Section A 14 through 24, the application was referred to the Suffolk County Planning Commission for review. They replied stating the application is a matter of local determination, and a decision of local determination should not be construed as either an approval or disapproval. This application was also referred to the Long Island State Park Commission because the property adjoins Nissiquaw River State Park. By letter dated August 22, 2016, the State Parks recommended that the town deny the request to waive the installation of the fence and plantings. The letter states, "We encourage the town to deny this request. Inspection of the area indicates that encroachment of New York State Parks' property currently exists in the area where the fence is being required as a condition of the subdivision. New York State Parks would like to see the debris removed from the state property and the area restored. In addition to the installation of a fence, no gate should be permitted in the fence alongside, adjacent to the park." The Planning Department has reviewed the waiver request and has no objection to waiving conditions F and G on Lot 1 because these requirements are part of the standard procedure for obtaining a building permit. However, this department objects to waiving conditions P and Q because the property adjoined state parkland and the fence and plantings will discourage the homeowner from encroaching on the state land. Further, there appears to be no hardship or difficulty to the applicant in complying with the requirements. Lastly, the Board of Zoning Appeals approved variances for this subdivision, BZA Case Number 1-15281, with the condition, "A fence shall be installed on the north and east property line to prevent encroachment and clearing onto the public property." If the Planning Board wishes to approve the request to waive condition P, the applicant would also need to reopen BZA Case Number 1-15281 and have condition four waived as well. Recommendation, the Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves the request of Lawrence G. Flynn to waive conditions F and G on Lot 1 within the subdivision known as number 1101 Map of Flynn Platt. And be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby denies the request of Lawrence G. Flynn to waive conditions P and Q within the subdivision known as number 1101 Map of Flynn Platt for the following reasons. One, the fence and plantings will prevent encroachment and clearing onto the state parkland. Two, there appears to be no hardship or difficulty to the applicant in complying with the requirements.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, my name is Vincent Trumarko. I represent the applicant. Of course, we agree with the first recommendation and disagree with the second recommendation of the Planning Department. We've submitted surveys to the Board, and as you can see, Lot Number 2, which is the improved parcel, has a rear yard of 20 feet, which also includes a portion of that rear yard containing retaining wall, which you can see in that black-and-white photo. We believe that, number one, the retaining wall is enough of a barrier for the owner of the property not to encroach upon park property. There's no stairway coming out of that retaining wall to get up there, and it's been planted, as you can see, with certain low-lying bushes and then some larger bushes. The situation is such that the owner has such very little property that we think, and I'm not sure if planning is talking about the three-foot fence there or the six-foot fence, but either fence would really make no sense, given the fact that if you look again at the survey, the survey shows the retaining wall on the one-side yard and the rear yard, which makes for a sufficient barrier that the homeowner would not encroach into state property. I think probably it would be a good idea, and I would suggest that the Board do a physical inspection just to see and get a feel for the property and the closeness of the way the house is built. Now, we got variances for all of that, but even so, he's got a 20-foot backyard that probably ends up to about 17 feet because of that wall, and it's more like a house that you would see a brownstone in Brooklyn with a little small backyard. Again, so we asked the Board if they wouldn't mind going out there and taking a look for yourselves. It would be much better than me handing you a picture and a survey because you can look at the whole property with the perspective of how the house is built and how close it is to the rear yard. So we asked the Board for its, to hold off on that resolution, proposed resolution until you look at it.
Fair enough. But the records show that the applicant provided us with a survey and a black-and-white 8-by-10 photo of a patio with chairs and a table. Now, if I'm to understand you correctly, the property line would be three feet in back of, or away from the top of the wall.
Approximately, yes. It's 20 feet from the house to the property line, and the retaining wall looks like it's in about, I don't have a scaling ruler, but it looks like it's in about three feet.
All right. My other question is, the state alleges that there are, there's debris, debris on their property that was placed there. Would that be the boulders or the rocks that were placed there for erosion control?
I, I'm really not sure. I don't think the boulders would be considered debris. I mean, it looks pretty good to me, but I'm not sure of where.
I mean, the area looks clean and well-kept, so that's the only reason I ask.
Yeah, well, I don't know. Maybe Mr. Flynn could share some light on that.
Please state your name for the record.
Lawrence G. Flynn, 8 Main Street, Kings Park, New York. The property owner to the north of this property owner put in a side fence, and some of that debris, I believe, is on, if they're referring to it, is on his, his property. This area is so, what we say, uncharted waters, so to speak. This property has been owned by the state since 1885, and normally a park fences in all the property. This park is 95% unfenced, and I think that to target one individual might be a little bit harsh.
That was, that would be my next question with, on the survey map, which is, I would say it's to the south, perhaps, versus Map of Nora Estates. Is there a fence between that parcel and the state property?
I can't say for sure. I don't know. But on the south side of the property there, that, he has denied sunlight on the south side. You know why? There's a 16-foot wall there, built on the property line, stepped back. So in other words, the, this fellow is in like a cave almost, when you, can you imagine three retaining walls on the south side of the property plus an eight-foot fence?
Yeah.
His whole south side is unsung. So we're just looking for some relief.
I, I think Mr. Trumarko makes a good point that perhaps it would be in the Board's interest to go do an onsite visit and actually see.
And initially, this filed map was back in 1905. So that was before, I think, you and I were born. So, you know, we're working with something that you, there's a lot of stories behind, you know, trying to get everything done correctly, but it was, it was very difficult. You know, here's a gentleman with a 20-foot backyard in today's time, and that's, that's a shame, but, but.
Okay.
Please take a look at it.
Any members of the Board have any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So are you saying regarding the park, the adjacent park being 95% unfenced, that if the fence was put up along this property, there would be a fence there along that part of the state park, but the whole rest of the state park would still be unfenced?
Right.
Okay. That's one question. The other question is, procedurally, it says in the memo that there was a condition imposed by the BZA requiring the fence on the eastern north side. So that if we granted the waiver as to the fence, wouldn't be, we'd be effectively canceling out a condition that the BZA has imposed?
The Board of Zoning Appeals would have to approve it as well.
Wouldn't it make sense for, for them to do it first? Because I, in other words, if it's their condition, I don't know that we should be passing upon their condition until they've decided themselves to, to waive it or relax it in some way. We didn't impose it, they did.
Well, no, you did as well. The Planning Board and the Board of Zoning Appeals both imposed the, the conditions on their approvals.
So two different boards impose the same conditions?
That's right.
So procedurally, we wouldn't be, so to speak, stepping on their toes by agreeing to give them this relief when the condition imposed by the BZA is to the contrary?
That's correct.
Then have to go back to them afterwards?
It would take approval, it would take the approval of both boards.
Okay.
About stepping on anybody's toes, I just want to remind.
Well, just procedurally, I don't want to.
No, I understand that, Ms. DeHart, but I just have to make a comment now. The Plan, the Board of Zoning Appeals didn't think much about stepping on this Board's toes when they voted against, absolutely, it was Frank Corridly's application for a, an additional lot, and this Board recommended approval to the, to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and they denied it.
Maybe they're not as nice as I am.
Well, maybe not, but you should bear that in mind. Thanks.
Well, I'm just saying, I just, procedurally, I just want to make sure that it's proper.
That's fine.
For us to act on it while their condition that they imposed is still out there. And I've been assured, I think, that we can.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just, we're just, one, if the fence were to come into play, what type of fence? Where's the fence going to be sitting on, and how high is the fence going to be? Is it chain link? Is it PVC? Is it?
It's a chain link.
It doesn't say that.
It doesn't say what.
It specifies height, I think, three to six.
36, but doesn't say the, the makeup of the fence.
No. And that would be where according to the retaining wall.
Generally, when you do that, it's chain link, but the other thing we don't understand is where the three-foot is and where the six-foot is because there's no differentiation.
You'll get to decide whether it's three or six, or where the three ends and where the six begins. You, you're a client?
I don't know.
Or did it mean that it has to be between three and six?
That was my understanding.
And we'll leave it up to you to assume that you're going to make the fence the same height all the way around if you do it.
And the reason why I bring that up too is because if you're sitting in his backyard, obviously you're sitting down lower. Are you looking up at, you know, on a white PVC, would be, would be like a billboard compared to a chain link, which would be, you know, see-through?
I've never seen anything other than chain link when you're against state property, if that's what the Board ultimately decides.
Usually they have their own chain link.
Yeah, yeah, right.
But the state, the state is requiring one homeowner, aside from everything else that had been required by anything in town, but the state is requiring one homeowner to put a fence, and the rest of the parkland is not fenced. So I just was wondering about that.
I think I'd like to go see this.
I can't answer. I don't know.
Is there any, is there any other houses that are backyard is the state property also?
Yes, and they're on fence except the people that have swimming pools.
Right, because then by law they have to do it.
Right.
There is also a cemetery within the immediate area that, that particular is fenced on four sides. They didn't want anyone to escape.
I agree. I think we should, we got to go look at it.
Yeah, I mean, the picture looks fine.
And the other thing is.
All right. Would be, two weeks be sufficient time for the Board to do an onsite visit? We would, we could adjourn this to the October 5 meeting? Do I have a motion to October, for October 5?
Well, I'll start with the first, the first, in the matter of number 1101 Map of Flynn Platt regarding conditions F and G, I move that we adopt the resolution as read according with, accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Okay. Motion to waive conditions F and G?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. A motion to adjourn the other two items for consideration until October 5?
In the matter of number 1101 Map of Flynn Platt regarding conditions P and Q, a motion to adjourn to the October 5, 2016 meeting for an onsite inspection and further considerations.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Those two items are adjourned to October 5. Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is Country Point at Smithtown, preliminary subdivision.
The applicant requests preliminary approval to subdivide 11.53 acres into 69 townhouse units. The proposed development consists of 13 residential buildings of four to eight units each, a recreation center, pool, sewage treatment plant, drainage reserve area, and 326 parking stalls. The units range from 1,650 square feet to 2,010 square feet and include 10% to be set aside as affordable per the Long Island Workforce Housing Act. This application was first heard at the August 10, 2016 Planning Board meeting. It was discovered that the plans did not reflect the road widening dedication along New York State Route 111 property line. It was unknown whether the corrected property line would affect the buildable lot area and legal yield of the property or would result, result in the need for additional variances from the Board of Zoning Appeals. Therefore, the applicant requested additional time to prepare revised plans. Additionally, the Planning Board had not yet received a secret recommendation from the Department of Environment and Waterways. For these reasons, the matter was adjourned to September 21st, 2016. The applicant submitted revised plans showing the corrected property line and a number of minor changes to the layout as a result of the correction. The correction resulted in a reduction in lot area of 0.1 acres. This dedication did not alter the yield of the property and does not require additional variances from the Board of Zoning Appeals. The changes to the plan are described below. One, updated property boundary involving New York State Department of Transportation dedication along New York State Route 111. Two, relocated four buildings on Road A, units 1 through 20, to meet updated 100-foot front yard setback requirement. Three, reline portion of Road B to meet 20-foot minimum setback to building. Four, patio reduced to eight feet on units 27 through 32. Five, modified Road A grass create tee turnaround. Six, parking adjustments. One, increase the number of built parking stalls from 69 to 72. And two, reduce the number of land bank parking stalls from 69 to 66. The Planning Department has reviewed the revised plans and has found them generally acceptable, subject to the following recommendations. One, the vegetative buffer behind units 27 through 34 and 51 through 55 should be enhanced in order to comply with the conditions of the zone change and protect the value of the Haven Lane neighborhood. Two, the final map should include a table with the individual lot number, unit number, unit type, and unit square feet for each unit. Although Section 248 of the Town Code does not require this, it has been a standard practice to show the unit designation information on final maps in the R6 zoning district. The Engineering Department has reviewed the revised plans and has found them acceptable. The Highway and Traffic Safety Departments have not commented on the most recently revised plans, however, they stated in the past that this is a private community and has no effect on the town roads. Recommendation, the following resolution is recommended for number 1167 Country Point at Smithtown from the Department of Environment and Waterways pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Be it resolved that the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown, after due study and deliberation of the subject record, issue a secret negative declaration. Determination of nonsignificance in EIS is not necessary. In the matter of the application for subdivision approval by 347 Building Company LLC for Country Point at Smithtown, number 1167, for the following reasons. A, the proposal does not involve the destruction or physical modification of any unique or highly valuable environmental or cultural resources as identified in or regulated by the Environmental Conservation Law of the State of New York. B, the parcel does not appear to contain any poor soil properties or unimaginable slopes which would impose severe environmental development constraints upon subject proposal. C, the nature of the proposal mitigates against a significant adverse impact upon the environment. D, the proposal appears to be consistent with the planned use of the parcel and compatible with neighboring land uses. And E, although there are New York State-mapped freshwater wetlands located on the parcel, no construction is planned within 100 feet of the wetland boundary, other than the removal of existing pavement and a guardrail, as delineated by VHB Engineering Surveying and Landscape Architecture, PCVHB, on September 17, 2015, and surveyed, surveyed by Paul M. Race, PLC, PLSPC, on September 30, 2015, and as depicted on the preliminary layout and materials plan prepared by VHB bearing the latest revision date of August 26, 2016. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown approves the preliminary map of number 1167 Country Point at Smithtown, subject to the following conditions. One, the final submission shall include all requirements of Section 248-15 and 248-16 of the subdivision regulations. Two, a table shall be shown on the final map indicating the individual lot number, unit number, unit type, and unit square feet of each unit. And three, a planting plan shall be modified to provide at least one additional row of evergreens and shade trees behind units 27 through 34 and 51 through 35. And be it further resolved that this preliminary plat approval shall be valid for a six-month period to end on March 21, 2017.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Vincent Pizzuli with offices at 200 Robbins Lane in Jericho, New York, for the applicant, 347 Building LLC. We, of course, join in the recommendation of the Planning Department. These plans comply with, with all applicable approvals and codes, are ready for your consideration of preliminary approval. I should just also add that we have also prepared final engineered grading and drainage plans. Those plans have been in the works for quite a while and have been reviewed and revised several times on preliminary instead of final review, which is a little unusual, but I'm happy to report it's done, and this map is ready to be approved. Thank you.
Any questions from the Board? I just have several things. I have visited the site again this afternoon and would like to reiterate my support for keeping the trees which border Haven Boulevard, Haven Lane. As you can see, they're quite extensive, and they're about 80 feet tall. And I noticed some of them are marked for preservation. That's standing in the middle of the lot, looking at the same trees from the opposite direction. I think, and I can't stress enough the importance of providing an adequate buffer to the residents of Haven Lane, and I would like to have the applicant make sure that the trees are preserved.
And we agree.
Okay.
We will preserve every tree that is capable of being preserved in the buffer. The only trees that would need to be removed are any trees that would interfere with the construction of the units on that portion of the property.
Correct.
For your further consideration, this map has also got to go to the Board of Site Plan Review for final site plan approval, at which time the Planning Department will, in addition. in addition to your comments here tonight, memorialize those conditions on final site plan review.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I just got one.
Sure.
On the list of trees to be removed, I see there's a couple of lines that border the condo complex itself. Is this the row that's going to be enhanced with the evergreens that's stated in here? This section here? So you have these here?
On the head, yes.
Yeah, so these here are set to be removed. Is this the row that's going to be added for the evergreen?
Any further questions? Any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? There being none, is there a motion to approve the preliminary plan?
In the matter of number 1167, Country Point at Smithtown, a move that we adopt a secret negative declaration as recommended by the planning department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Unanimously adopted.
Thank you.
And in the matter of the preliminary map of number 1167, Country Point at Smithtown, a move that we adopt the resolution as read, in accordance with the recommendation of the planning department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Unanimously adopted.
We thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is another update on the town-wide comprehensive plan, and Chair recognizes environmental planner, Allison Murray, to bring us up to date.
Thank you very much. You'll find that there's a memo in your packet. I'll read from the memo now, and then if the board has any questions, I'm happy to answer. This is to follow up on the June 15th, 2016, public hearing conducted by the planning board to obtain public comment on a draft of an update to the comprehensive plan of the town. Previously, the town board requested the planning board conduct a public hearing and then make recommendations to the town board. The public hearing was sparsely attended, and the residents who attended left before the presentation began. However, the planning board continued with the hearing because interested residents and business owners would be able to view the hearing online and on cable television. The planning department gave a half-hour presentation that highlighted some of the more interesting parts of the plan. The board and staff concur that the public participation is essential and proper in town planning. To this end, the board established a 30-day public comment period following the hearing to obtain comments. To further facilitate public involvement in creating a comprehensive plan, the planning department developed an online questionnaire. The questionnaire consisted of 26 questions covering housing, physical appearance of the community, economic factors, the environment, parks and community facilities, and infrastructure. The planning department set up a webpage on the town website with links to all eight volumes of the draft comprehensive plan update, as well as a link to provide email comments and a link to the questionnaire. The planning department also emailed all of the chambers of commerce, civic associations, and other known community organizations to request their comments on the plan and request that they encourage their members to complete the questionnaire. Over 700 residents responded to the questionnaire. The planning department also received written comments from four civic associations, three residents, and gyrodyne. Copies of all correspondence, as well as a summary of the questionnaire responses, are attached to this memo. Based on the public input received through the letters and the questionnaire, the planning department recommends that the planning board adopt the following resolution. Be it resolved that the planning board makes the following conclusions and recommendations to the town board relative to the draft of the comprehensive plan update. One, overall, the draft plan would result in a much more desirable town than would the existing plan. The draft provides for a balance of protecting existing character of the town, preserving the environment, providing goods and services, improving public health, improving government efficiency and sustainability, protecting property values, increasing employment, and improving problem areas. Two, we appreciate that no single plan will be ideal to everyone, but this draft generally achieves a balance of diverse interests. Three, it's not good planning to try to reconcile details at this stage. Professional planning experts state that a comprehensive plan is supposed to be general, but should lay out the basic vision that a community seeks. The details will be addressed as time goes forward, and the plan will be used as a guide for methods and considerations for resolving the details. Four, the most significant conclusions from the public input include the following. The medium-density suburban character of the town should not be changed. The visual quality of the residential neighborhoods is high. The visual quality of many business districts and the old Northport Road area are low. The land uses that should be encouraged the most are open space, single-family homes, restaurants, stores, and agriculture. The land uses that should be discouraged most are commercial parking in residential areas, heavy industry, outdoor storage, and apartments over two stories. Park facilities in the most demand are nature preserves, walking and biking trails, concert venues, and kayak lunches. Park facilities in the least demand include golf courses, hockey rinks, skateboard parks, basketball courts, and boating facilities. More areas should have sewers, especially the high groundwater areas and downtown business districts. There's opposition in the old Northport Road area to heavy industrial uses. And lastly, residents want to be able to walk to stores and community facilities. Number five, the public opinion survey suggests that the draft plan is largely consistent with the public's goal. The written comments are diverse, but suggest that some parts of the draft should be improved. Based on the information available at the present time, the planning board recommends that the plan be modified as described below. For land use, one, the amount of land used in the old Northport Road corridor for heavy industry should be reduced. Two, the amount of land used for parkland, agriculture, and renewable energy should be increased. Three, there should be some more flexibility for development of the gyrodyne property. The essence of any development there should, A, support Stony Brook University, which is a major economic engine in the region; B, provide a large buffer to maintain the natural and historic corridors; and C, limit the overall density to be less intensive than if the property were to be fully built out in compliance with the existing ally zoning. Four, rather than creating downtowns in Comac, Hopg, and Nescantet, the existing neighborhood retail areas should be enhanced, but not changed into downtowns that looked like they were developed before the advent of motor vehicles. Number five, the visual quality of the downtown should be improved. And number six, the height of multifamily buildings should generally be limited to two stories. For transportation, one, pedestrian and bicycle circulation should be a high priority. Two, a Long Island Railroad yard should not be located in the town unless the proposed yard would create less environmental and community impacts than uses permitted as of right on the site. Three, paratransit service should be provided between the railroad stations and nearby retail centers. For community facilities, the plan should include components to reduce energy consumption and to increase renewable energy. Two, the parkland along Lake Grand Concombre should be improved so as to beautify the lake area. Three, the plan should emphasize more trails for hiking and cycling. Overall, the inventory and analysis volume should be updated to either remove recommendations or ensure that the recommendations do not conflict with Volume 8. I'll let the board know that there were a number of circumstances where the inventory and analysis conflicted with the final recommendation. And two, the goals and objectives should be modified so as to provide more guidance and to establish priorities. We've attached to this all of the public comments that were received in writing, as well as the summary, so the end of the packet contains a summary of the 26 questions that were in the questionnaire. With respect to the questionnaire, I'll just point out that we got, we had a response of 739 respondents, which for the town is about 1% of the town's population for a survey. That's pretty good. There were a few communities that seemed to be very well represented. Smithtown, Kings Park, St. James were well represented. Fort Salonga was incredibly well represented. And then Comac, Hopg, and Nescantet had fewer respondents. But overall, we felt that it was pretty reflective of the town residents.
And based on those responses, you adjusted and made adjustments to the plan accordingly?
Well, in our memo, the recommendations that we're making address those comments to the best extent that we felt we were able to.
Now, the volumes of the plan, are they going to be rewritten or amended?
They would be. So the next step, if the planning board makes the recommendation to the town board, the town board would also have to hold a public hearing on this.
Right.
And assuming that the town board takes the planning board's recommendation, which we expect that they would, we would make the changes accordingly.
Well, the supervisor asked the board to go through this process, which we did, I think, on three or four occasions. Mr. Flynn gave us updates. We did have a public hearing. I've attended public meetings outside of this forum, and I think it would be appropriate at this point to make our recommendation to the town board, who ultimately will have the final say in whether the plan is adopted or not. Do any of my colleagues here have any questions for the planning department? There being none at this time, then I would like to make a motion that...
Is there a reason why one town was more than the other? Fort Salonga gave you more input than like Comac or Hopg or...
What we...
Is there any reasoning that you can say?
Sure. So what we know, what we did is we emailed a link to the questionnaire to all of the civic associations and the chambers. We also posted a link on the town website. And from what we can tell, we know that it was posted on Facebook, on Smithtown Moms. There were a few parent sites, which I think is why there was a decent response from Smithtown. And I know that the Fort Salonga Association emailed the link to their members. So that's why I think there was a large response from them.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the board? Then I would like to make a motion that we make a recommendation to the town board of Smithtown to adopt a new comprehensive plan for the town.
Are we going to do that by the resolution that was read into the record?
We can do that.
Okay. Then I move that we, with respect to the recommendation to the town board regarding the drafting of the new comprehensive plan, I move that we adopt the resolution regarding such recommendation as read by the planning department during its presentation tonight.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Our recommendation goes forth. At this time, I think it's appropriate to commend the planning department, who wrote these volumes entirely in-house without the aid of a consultant. And I would like to commend you, as well as the entire staff that I've had the pleasure of working with more closely over these past few months. Smithtown planning department is comprised of professionals, and you've done a good job with the plan. And I look forward to hearing what the public has to say to the supervisor and the council. And I'm sure the recommendation will be just as favorable.
Thank you.
Is there any other further business to come before the board this evening? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We stand adjourned.